Call the Apache Junction work session to order.
Mayor Sertie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Barker.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Rizzi.
Present.
Councilmember Struble.
Here.
Councilmember Waldron.
Here.
All members of the council are present. You have a quorum.
Presentation and discussion on an award of for projects who petition status aquatics facility. Is this Nick?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Nick Blake, Park Superintendent. Yeah, the purpose for me being here tonight is to talk a little bit about the replastering of the pool. So I'm gonna see if this, oh.
It works. Actually works.
That's a big pool.
So, as you may recall, last year we resurfaced all of the cool decking, which is basically everything you see in green on there. That was done last year. This year, we have the need to basically finish the refurbishment of the pool and to resurface the interior of the pool surfaces themselves. And to replace the existing plaster, which been there since the pool was originally installed in two thousand and two. So, on October twenty-fourth, we had bids turned in. We had two bidders, CDC Pools and California Pools and Landscape. Who were, who each submitted bids. And in the bid tabulation there, you'll see that CDC Pools came in with the lowest bid at two hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars. As opposed to California Pools, that was three hundred and nineteen thousand. This amount, even though we only had two bidders, the amount that CDC Pools submitted was well within our budget, which we had budgeted two hundred and eighty thousand dollars for. So, that number you see there is the combined total of the base bid and the alternate bid. The alternate bid is basically to include the handrails and to get those replaced along with the pool resurfacing. And they'll also replace the lighting in the pools at the same time. So, we recommend that there be an extra ten percent added to the award of bid in the event of unforeseen change orders, which oftentimes can come up. Which would then be a total bid from CDC Pools, including the ten percent of two hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and ten cents. The pool staff recommends that the city council award the bid for that amount. Any questions?
Does it look like, when was the last time we recorded it?
When it was originally installed, two thousand and two.
Oh, okay, so it's been a long time.
So sixteen years.
Yeah.
And they say you get about fifteen years out of them. We're actually replacing this with a different material than the original plaster. We're using what they refer to as a pebble sheen. Which maybe, some of you may be familiar with, but it has a very tiny aggregate or pebbles in it. Which gives a little bit of a texture to it and has a greater longevity than even the plaster. So, we're excited to be able to get the pebble sheen in there for the amount that we got in the bid, so.
And so while they're doing it, are there gonna be any other maintenance or anything with any lighting?
We'll replace all the existing lights that are in there with LED lights. Which should result in some more energy savings. And then, as I said, the handrails, all of the fittings, the water fittings get replaced.
Yeah.
The drain grates, all that stuff gets replaced new, so it should be, when we get done, that pool's gonna be in really great shape for the next several years.
Cool.
Could not last me, that's for sure.
How long does it take to fill it when we, when we get?
When we fill it up, oh, I think we can fill it within, oh, probably day and a half to two days. So, a little jump in the spike in the water bill that month, but.
It's a good thing we own a bar company. It's pretty cool, but I'd say keep the chlorine out and put fish in it. If I had it. Some little sharks.
All right.
All right, thank you. Presentation and discussion on proposed amendments to Apache Junction City Code, Volume One, Chapter Nine, Health and Sanitation. David.
Mayor, council, we talked about this two weeks ago and there were a couple of concerns. And so we took it back. We met with a couple of the council members, discussed those concerns. So I'm here to kinda just go over what we've altered since the last time you looked at it. So we got some happy pictures this time for our vision or our mission. So, under the findings, just to kinda go over, we simplified the intent, added Arizona revised statutes. That was in there last time, and the conflict ordinance language. So, under definitions, since the last time you saw this, we added the definition for motor home to the abandoned vehicle definition, or added the word motor home, and then we actually added a definition for it. We added bordered over windows and weather protection for roof and structures, or as to the definition of blight. And so, you know, that is something we see occasionally as somebody has boarded up the windows, which is a safety issue, but also contribute, you know, shows that the maintenance and the glass haven't been replaced like they need to. And then the other part was to clarify that when we see tarps and plastic used as roofing or permanent weather protection, that that's not something we wanna see, so, and that has a blighting influence. We added shopping carts on residential zone property to the definition of debris, trash, and litter. That seems to be a problem that we constantly are running up against, just not sure why, but they seem to end up on all sorts of properties.
Would almost be stolen property, wouldn't it, since nobody's really supposed to have those, why not?
I know that we, that a lot of the company, you know, Safeway and Fries and stuff do a lot to try to, you know, they have people hired to go gather them. But yes, it might be something, maybe that's a way to handle it. So, I think some of them even come from out of town, so, you know, places we don't even have here, so, but that might be something to look at.
So right now, if we see somebody pushing a shopping cart, are we, we're not citing them, I'm assuming, pulling them over or whatever an officer would do to cite people, we're not?
We are not, and the other thing we've been working on over the years is with Safeway, we never find those out there. And now Fries, Kroger, because they have this RFID technology that stops them, people wonder about that. Walmart does not, however, and so we work with the local Walmart folks to contract out, they have a third party that and gets a reimbursement, kind of an incentive-based approach to go find them and then bring them back. And we actually use our community service worker team to alert companies to come pick them up. And if we get too many, we'll even pick them up and bring them, so we haven't gone to that approach yet of citing anybody, but could be an approach.
I guess my question is, how is it any different than if, than walking out of the store with something you didn't pay for? It's, isn't it, I mean, it was.
It's an asset for the store.
It's theft.
So we added a couple things to make the definition of driveway clearer. We added area and that, to just kinda hopefully tweak that, made it a little clearer. We added legally to the definition of improved property. We have sometimes people put stuff on property and then say, well, it's improved now, but then they didn't have a permit for whatever they put there, so, wanted to add that. To infestation, we added that insect, rodent, reptile, or pest droppings indicate a presence. That way, you know, it's not always that we can see something when we're there, 'cause they're gonna scurry away, but then we can say that, you know, look, this is evidence that you have a infestation. We were trying to get rid of the word junk. Unfortunately, the state uses it for term for junk vehicle, which we've brought in. And then we're using that also in the code, and we'll talk about later. So we added that definition. And then we added the definition for motor home. And one reason I like the, adding the definition, we've dealt with some cases where people have dismantled or partially dismantled motor homes. I think having this definition in here and being able to tell somebody, well, you're, you don't have a motor home because it doesn't meet, that it doesn't have a refrigerator or, you know, toilet or something, because they've removed it, that then it's not a, you know, motor home and that they need to get rid of it, so, but we do run into that quite a bit. Under public nuisances prohibited, we added the junk vehicle, which we defined, added the definition for, to the items not to be present on exterior property or premise. So we kinda have abandoned vehicles, which are primarily handled by PD when they're in the right of way. And then inoperable vehicles, vehicles in a state of disrepair or non-functioning, and then we have junk vehicles.
Dave, I apologize, I've not read every word of this, but while we're on this, and this almost falls into sign code two. The businesses that like to put vehicles out and leave them there. Are we strengthening that at all, or is that gonna stay the same, which as long as they're licensed and they can run? We've had several that do that around town.
The, I think those provisions are specifically in the zoning ordinance for the, using a vehicle as signage. I do know that we have a few around town that are probably not in drivable condition or not properly tagged. We haven't gone after them yet, but I know that it's on our radar.
You talking about a vehicle for sale, or for like someone that's selling perhaps?
I have a shop here, and I don't have good signage, so I buy this big ugly van and I park it out by the road. And on that van, it says my business is.
We have a couple like that, that would be cricket, fat man's, I think the license plates have expired, there's a tire that's flat, so we probably need to go knock on the door and tell them, but yes, the current zoning code deals with vehicles as a sign, which we can strengthen. I mean, you're supposed to move that vehicle to another parking space, like closer to your building. So like Ace Hardware, he's supposed to park that up towards the front of his building.
That's what I was gonna say.
Or he's using it during the course of the day, and then he just, it's not supposed to be a permanent sign.
Okay, thank you.
So the answer is it's not in, it won't be dealt with at this point, yeah.
Yeah. Under nine-one-three-B vehicles, we changed the wording, this is one of those things that was brought up as a concern. So, we've done, or the wording now is going to be except as provided for in other regulations, which would be the zoning code or another ordinance. No inoperable or junk vehicle shall be parked, kept, or stored on any premises. And no vehicle shall at any time be in a state of major disassembly, disrepair, or in the process of being stripped or dismantled. This applies to all residential districts, MHP Mobile Home Park, RV Park, Master Plan Community, and Public Institutional Districts. So businesses are covered under the other regulations, because if they're properly zoned, then that's part of, you know, if they're zoned to be a repairer or in that category, then they will be able to do that, it's not what that's for.
So this includes somebody that's got a fenced-in, blocked, walled backyard, and they're not allowed to have any of that in their backyard?
The, the view part will come in.
Comes in.
I think it comes in later, so, yeah, this is just kinda setting the standard, that this is the standard, where it can be seen from and how that's applicable. And then one, we added, or for B-two, performance of minor vehicle repairs is, so I changed the wording on this, 'cause when I read it, I was kind of concerned. So, we reworded it, it, performance of minor vehicle repairs is not prohibited within residential districts. Except we're not allowed under covenants, conditions, restrictions, or CCNRs, or homeowner association rules, 'cause we don't wanna overrule theirs. And, or by the owner or management of a multifamily property. So, we did wanna, you know, allow people to change their oil and stuff, that's normal to keeping up your vehicle. Major vehicle repairs shall be conducted inside a garage or an approved structure. So we did take out carport from that, we do have quite a few problems with that, I have a picture if you wanna see, but, so we did address that. And then, all vehicle repairs performed must be customary and incidental to the principal use of the property. Any vehicle undergoing repair must be titled to the owner or occupant of the property. Only one vehicle may be undergoing repair at one time. Vehicle repairs shall not exceed ten calendar days unless performed inside a garage or other approved structure. The painting of vehicles or other parts thereof in any residential zone district is prohibited unless performed inside a legally permitted inspected spray booth. So I think that took care of some of the concerns. And then while conducting vehicle repairs, it is the property owner's responsibility to ensure that any and all fluids are not discharged in stormwater drainage system or soil. So we didn't even have that before, so we've got that. For, we, at, one of the requests was to deal with people sleeping in sheds or housing themselves in sheds. And I'm guessing Joel will probably have a comment on this. But sleeping or living in an accessory structure that is not legal, not a legal accessory dwelling, 'cause we do have a provision for that, or residential addition, is contrary to applicable law. So we want to specifically call out that they should not be living in the sheds and stuff, and we've, we've dealt with that quite a bit. I don't know if that reads correctly.
Now that's not gonna affect the child living in, or not living, but sleeping out in their little fort or their treehouse, I must.
No. That's fine. And then to, there was a question about, we're trying to address signage a little more for the bandit signs that we see a lot of. And we did add, and signs permitted by state law to cover any of the campaign signs and stuff, that since those are covered under state law. And hopefully, it will, you know, up to you if we bring this back for a work session on December third, or just for adoption on December fourth. And if you have any questions or more thoughts or anything, I'm ready to.
I have some clarifications of, so, well, I'm not sure where it's at anymore, because we added stuff, but nine-one-three-B, which has to do with the sale of vehicles. In ours, it says you can do one at a time, you can display one at a time, or three over the course of twelve months, I think it is. And so, I mean, that's, isn't the state law like seven vehicles a year that you could sell?
I think that's in regard to whether or not you trigger a dealer license, correct?
Yeah.
So, the, I believe this provision is both in the zoning code and the building code for the three in a year.
Yeah, and so just, I mean, that, you know, people are gonna be coming out and saying, well, you can only do three, but the state, you know, but, and that's gonna be, I mean, we're not gonna go drive around. We're gonna be requiring, or, you know, neighbors to say, oh, that guy's got his fifth car this year to report it.
Right, we're not, we're, it's, that one is really more complaint-based, we do have several people that really try to take advantage of it, so we're, but, and we've had them parked at Jiffy Lube and stuff before and had those issues, so, but, but no, we're not driving around and, you know, we don't have that manpower.
That would be tough, because I drive around and I see a vehicle all the time, and it's like, who knows?
I mean, if they space them out far enough, we'd forget, but, but we have a lot of them, it's every weekend, they've got a different one, so.
And then, where we talk about weed control and then dead, dead trees and such things, and then like, when you come north, on Delaware Avenue, there between, well, Sixteenth and, well, Sixteenth and Southern, there's houses that are real close to the road, I mean, the sidewalk, and some of those trees are on private property, but they hang over. Is that something that we cite those guys and then they're supposed to cut them down? 'Cause sometimes they cover the stop signs and stuff, so those are the.
That, that's another, I mean, that was, that is one that if we, you know, proactively will try to address or will by complaint, but yes, they're specific, you know, they have to keep it so high and stuff. Sometimes in a, you know, if there's a question about whether it's ours or theirs, the court crew will go get it and kinda clean it up to kind of avoid any problems, so.
Yeah, and then as long as the tree has one leaf on it, it's still alive, is that? Like, I've got, I've got a tree in my front yard that is dying, and I'm just waiting for it to die, 'cause I don't wanna cut it yet, but.
We probably wouldn't just drive around for dead trees, we, we have problems, a lot of the, the commercial properties where one blows over or whatever, and they don't replace it. We will get involved in that.
Yeah.
We have gotten involved in a couple situations for the, some of the properties where they have, you know, a common retention and stuff. In that, I would say that in most cases, if it's, if we're bringing up a dead tree, it's in relation to other issues that are going on.
Yeah.
So.
Then the last one I've got is the, the address signage on houses. And it specifies it has to, I forget what the size is, but then it also says it has to not be, you can't, it has to stick out. I mean, it has to be a, you know, what, visible, well, it has to be seeable, visible, whatever it is. Does the fire district go around, I mean, do, that's a very serious thing that the fire district should get involved with, aren't, don't they, or?
Well, it, it's in the fire code, it's in the building code, we try to apply it or make sure when we have a house closing, that's just been built, that it has it. We brought it into here because we're dealing with, sometimes that's an issue of us trying to establish what, which house we're at and dealing with. So we just wanted to add that, so we can, you know, in addition to these other things we found, you need to get your house numbers up, you know, so.
And the other, you know, and just the contrast, you know, if you got a beige or a, you know, desert colored house, and you do a tan lettering or something, you can't see it from, especially at night, so.
Right, yes, and, and, you know, hopefully it benefits everybody if we get them to do that, but yes, it can be very difficult to locate something at night.
And Foley's grown over the top of it and all that stuff too, so. That's all I got.
In talking about people that have a dealer's license, what about people, so if somebody has a dealer's license to sell cars, they can sell cars out of their home? And that's okay, they can sell, with this dealer's license, it'll allow them to sell more than this number here?
I, I've read a little bit about that, I don't wanna speak as an expert on the dealer license. I know that they are restricted, and I believe they have to have signage and stuff. The condition we're talking about is specifically dealt within the zoning code and then here, that you're just not supposed to display on your private. We don't want somebody having that, you know, dealership on the corner. So, and we do have some people that do that. Cars that are on vacant property, we deal with a little differently, and usually we're not dealing with numbers so much as you just can't have it, don't park it here on this undeveloped property.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
If you have, if you're selling seven cars, I think within a certain amount of time, you need a dealer's license. The city takes care of the zoning part of that, so you can't be doing that from a residentially zoned property. Because they're in the business of selling vehicles. So that's really, unless they come, and I doubt development services would say, oh, this is a home-based business. I'm not sure you've gotten applications for that, 'cause I don't think the zoning would allow it.
That was kinda my question, thank you.
What he said.
Okay.
Yeah, we haven't issued any home occupations for people to have selling cars on the internet. I think the state's pretty restrictive as to how you can sell them and where you can sell them.
Okay, so you go to a house and they whip out the dealer's license, and it's like, no, you have to have a business license and.
You have to have the zoning.
And it's not gonna be allowed in a residential, okay, thank you.
Yep.
So I think we're finishing up questions, is that it on this? Oh, I have one more question, so, the old one on page eighteen, I'm not sure where it's at anymore, but it deals with the inspections, and we kinda changed some wordings and stuff as to what y'all can do with the properties and timeframes and that type of stuff. And will this, you know, we have our top ten or bottom ten properties that we're dealing with as far as blight and, and that kinda stuff. I guess it's bottom ten, not top, we don't wanna call them top ten properties. Will the change in this language assist us to work with the county health department and other agencies on expediting the processes that we have to go through to?
I, the, where we will gain some time in the longer, more involved-type situations is in the initial time period, we've reduced it from fourteen to ten days. And then by kind of eliminating one of the four stages that we had and making that three, we get them to, you know, we
Do that.
Hopefully to a pinch point for them, that they're not really wanting to go to jail, and now they're gonna clean it up.
Yeah.
As far as working with the other agencies, I don't know that there's anything we can implement or change, you know, to really get them, you know, they, they struggle like everybody else with manpower, and they have to make choices and stuff like that. So, we have gotten assistance on some things, and then some other ones that we thought we might, we didn't, so. And I think there. we didn't. So, and I think their, their timeframes, if it, if it's something we could, you know, try to put all on them, their timeframes are probably even longer than ours. So.
That's all I got.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any questions? So, do you want to see this again on December 3rd, or you just want to go to the public hearing on the 4th? That's up to you all.
Public hearing.
I'm going to the public hearing on the 4th.
Okay. All right, we'll set it up for a public hearing on the 4th. Okay, thank you.
Okay, presentation and discussion on proposed ordinance 1464, amending city code for fees regarding animals. And Arnold, you're going to be up there for the next four, the next three, or about animals?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, and esteemed city staff. Arnold Freeman, HAPD.
You want something, huh?
Actually, I'm coming to you tonight without any requests, other than to maybe amend-
To change it.
Exactly. If you recall, back on July the 17th, I believe, July the 17th, you directed staff to look at the animal ordinances and see what improvements or revisions could be made. Well, staff has done that, and on ordinance number 1464, which is our fee ordinance, on page two, we removed the license fees for pot-bellied pigs, both sterilized and non-sterilized. And on page three, we removed the class three kennel permit, which has an 80 dollar, 80 dollar annual fee, which ties directly into the major changes in the chapter six revisions. There are no fee increases recommended with this request. So, suggested revisions on chapter six are, first, is 613 allows the city manager to convene a panel of city residents for a civil hearing in lieu of a citation for animal noise nuisance. 6-1-8 eliminates the class three kennel permit, which allows nine to 12 dogs to be kept in accordance with other provisions of chapter six. We currently have two or three class three kennel permit holders that will be grandfathered in, and as long as they maintain their licensing and their fees, they will continue to hold that, that permit. So. 6-2-3 allows alternative owner notification of animals impounded, impounded during the arrest of owner, and provides for abandonment, abandonment determination. 6-5-2 allows for the city to recover costs of animal care of animals found in motor vehicles where owner is not present. 6-7-1 eliminates the licensing and fees for pot-bellied pigs. 6-7-4 clarifies jurisdiction and quarantine of pot-bellied pig bites. 6-8-2, 3, 4, and 5 eliminates terminal or market project language with regards to pot-bellied pigs. And 6-9-2 adds clarifications and terminology to criminal filings and penalties. In addition, there are minor grammar and terminology changes throughout chapter six, and changes to the chapter four fees, eliminating licensing and registration of pot-bellied pigs.
Hmm, that's so cute.
Questions? We train them very well.
Bryant, if, if there were a panel to be seated, do we have anything like that now? Have you ever done this before?
One time. It was regarding cargo containers. We do have a, we do have a system, and it was one time, right, Joel, in 10 years, or when that was, how long ago was that?
I think the answer is it's delegation of duties to the assistant city manager.
Now that I remember that, George delegated it to me, that's right. So, in this case, Joel, would that delegation of duties still apply?
You have the authority to delegate to the assistant city manager, and then he would have the authority to delegate to others.
So, we went through that process.
So, the panel would be internal, it wouldn't be citizens at heart?
No, we had, it was, it'd be city employees.
Of city employees?
But this, but that's what the last one was. But this one would be city residents.
This one says city.
Correct. And so, what I would probably do is work with captain, and maybe work with some of our fellow cities to find out best practices on the types of folks, how to bring those in, and how big a group, and work on kind of a quasi-judicial.
Would it be possible to ask people from the boards that we have, that serve on our boards, because they're kind of already, you know, in that mode?
That are aware of the issues in our community, yeah.
I have a question. You have in that particular section, it says that the person who owns the dog must agree to that. What happens if they don't agree?
Then, I think it goes-
I mean, there's no ramification in the-
Then they would be cited on a criminal case if the evidence supports it.
So, if they determine they're not going to take part in this, then it would just go-
Criminal.
Criminal.
This is a means to avoid a criminal citation-
Yeah, yeah.
And give them the opportunity to at least listen to other neighbors and, you know, citizens that live here, and maybe they will, maybe a light will, bulb will go on, and they'll snap and go, oh, maybe you're right. Maybe my dog barks too much.
Maybe he does.
Right. So.
I got a question.
Yes, Chip.
Okay, I, I noticed in, in reading through it, that we had eliminated the, the, let's say, the raising of a pig through 4H, and we said Future Farmers of America, which is no longer in existence, it's, it's now called FFA.
Yes, sir.
Which meant the same thing, but they changed it just to Alpha. So, in other words, and I don't know if our high school has an FFA program or not, or even would consider bringing it back. This would totally eliminate that as a capability of doing anything like that?
No, it would, it would take our enforcement authority away from going out and checking the animals, because pigs are livestock, they're not domesticated animals, which all of our ACOs are trained in domestic animals, but not necessarily livestock. We would refer any questions to the, the state livestock people, and let them handle any of those types of issues.
So, it still would, it would be allowed, okay?
Yes, sir.
It would be allowed in a large lot, or where they can have livestock?
I think in the zoning code, we do define large and small livestock. I think there might be a provision, I don't have it in front of me, I thought there's a provision that allows you to do like a 4H project or something like that, if you have acre and a quarter zoning. So, I think we allow, I don't know how many it's limited to, but I think-
It's a good time limit.
It's in the zoning code, though, yeah.
Well, in, in this one, they've eliminated it completely, so I just wanted to make sure-
For possible pigs, though, but not-
No, no, this is, they say pig.
Swine.
Swine, is what it said.
Swine, is what it says.
Pot-bellies are not swine.
That's right.
You tell them that every day, right?
Yep.
When are we going to hear this, then, for a public hearing?
Scheduled for December 4th.
I believe, let's see. When, when do you want to hear it?
I'm just, just curious.
I thought, you know, is it tomorrow night? I thought it was on-
I don't believe it's on tomorrow.
Then it would be the following meeting?
Okay, the 4th.
Yeah, it's tomorrow night, it's not on-
Yeah, unless we hear it differently, we'd probably, sorry, Your Honor, unless we heard differently, we'd probably bring it back on the 4th.
All right.
You want to bring public hearing on both items, on both the ordinances?
Okay. Okay, on to the next one, presentation and discussion on proposed ordinance 1465.
That was, I believe, I covered all of that at the same time.
Yes.
Let's see here.
So, did you do five and five as well?
Yes, sir. 57, 58, and 59 were all covered under the same presentation.
Okay. All right, so if no more on that, then we'll move on to discussion with Topaz Regional Wireless.
Yes, sir. As Council knows, we're members of TRWC, which is Mesa and two or three other agencies. We've had the, a couple of the Indian nations have requested admission into Topaz for inclusion into the, the, the radio system that we currently use. The majority of the changes come with the waiver of sovereign immunity for the participating tribal nations. As you know, they do have sovereign immunity, but they had to waive portions of that to become members of Topaz. Fort McDowell, Yavapai, and I want to say, it looks like Fort McDowell and Yavapai is the only ones that have applied this time. So, there, we had to change it because there are other Indian nations that are also looking at this radio system as well. So, the other provision that was amended was the board of representatives must be police chiefs, fire chiefs, chief information officers, chief financial officers, city managers, county managers, state of Arizona department directors, regional agency directors, or other positions with executive legal authority. So, it narrows down who can be on the board representing our agency. Those are the two changes to the IGA. And this is due December 1st, so we're under, I think, an emergency clause on this one, which I will, will come before you again tomorrow night, I believe.
Yeah, so, yes. Any questions on this? Have you told us everything you needed to tell us?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And that is it. So, if nothing else, then we'll be adjourned.